Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 26, 2019, and it's a beautiful evening outside. And I love the fact that the blossoms are out and spring has sprung. And so, councilors, it's nice to see all of you. Please let the record show that the councilors are all here, and they all look happy. Oh, yes, I see smiles. See? It's amazing. Council members, you have the minutes will be around next time, so you'll get a chance to see them then. Do we have any visitor or public comment? Anybody stepping to the microphone this evening? I don't see anybody doing it, so we're going to move promptly forward. Under reports and presentations, council members, I have a few things to tell you, but first of all, have a budget committee appointment that it is -- that I'm recommending. Jessica's application is in front of you. I'm recommending that we appoint her to the Budget Committee. And does that sound okay?
I move to appoint Jessica Madrono to the Budget Committee.
Second?
I have a motion. Second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Under other things, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit. I've had a number of different kinds of things going on. I did want to let you know that recently I did have the opportunity to attend the Celebration of Life for Mike Danko. It was up at Troutdale. There were several hundred people that did attend, and I was asked to speak a little bit, and it was a very thoughtful day, and it was a chance to see a number of people from our community, some who are still here and some who've been here over the years. And it was a wonderful opportunity and remembering people that helped move our community forward. I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking for the gate and had a chance to speak at that, and what a wonderful addition to the community that that's going to be. And it even stopped raining for the groundbreaking.
Yay.
And the IO did get a picture with the dirt. I was doing -- they caught my dirt in the air, which is --
[laughing]
Who knows? Did have a chance to visit with Representative Kurt Schrader. Several mayors, we visited with him just a couple of days ago. The things we talked about were broadband and the importance of that, since he does serve on the Commerce Committee. We talked about the importance of infrastructure, water and sewer, not just for our community but for others. We talked about the importance of Highway 51 and 22, which he was understanding. And we also talked, again, and serving on the Commerce Committee, they have interest in the census, and so we had a detailed conversation. He and I have spoken about that before, but he did get, frankly, a good dose. Maybe that was not the phrase I wanted to use, but I guess I did. Had a chance to visit through Sean Irvine and our city manager. They had Business Oregon attend. The statewide Business Oregon Advisory Governing Group was here, and we had a chance to, along with said corps, make a presentation about the wonderful things in Independence, and they were very impressed with what was going on. And, you know, our statewide reputation continues, and there were a lot of their entrepreneurial board members were very interested in what was going in. So I want to compliment Mr. Irvine and our city manager for helping make things happen, and that looked really good. So thank you both, to both of you. I think our community took another step forward. They have funding. So finally, I just did want to let you know that, as you know, I'm one of the gubernatorial appointments to the Regional Solution for Polk, Marriott and Yamhill. We have a meeting on Thursday where we're looking at projects, funding around the state, and trying to help move economic development forward. Jackie Winters is the convener of that group, and I've had the pleasure of serving on that for a couple of years. So those are some of the things that are going on. Let's go to city council reports. And councillor, take us. I think you have traffic safety. Do you have anything to share with us today?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, actually.
Please.
First of all, for a little while now, we've been talking about some sort of data collection device, something that'll track speed and direction and give us a good record of what's going on so that we could move around the city. And I was just told that we got a device today. We didn't -- we're trialing it. So we'll see how that works and see if that's going to fill our needs, and don't know the cost yet, but hopefully it's not too bad. Anyway, that's kind of exciting. The other thing I wanted to bring to the council is, I think it was the past meeting, we had a gentleman, Mr. Means, who'd come and talked about the stop sign at the bridge and also G Street issues there, and he came to our Traffic Safety Commission and expressed his concerns. Out of that, we've -- the chief has stepped up patrols, apparently has initiated quite a few stops and I think a few tickets in there, too, and that will probably continue. But I just wanted to say that the intersection at the bridge, that stop sign and where that stripe is and the visibility there and the bridge and everything is a little more complicated a situation that we'll probably have to look at a little bit when we do the transportation master plan, will be something we'll be looking at, so.
Great.
And that's it.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Councillor Cookain?
Independence Days?
Please.
The big news is the website is back up and online. It's IndependenceDays.org. All the events that are currently scheduled are on there. The one big thing that came out of the last meeting on the 14th of March was, we want to have a really solid social media presence at this particular event. So we are trying to recruit a student, college or high school, to start about mid-May doing some promo work and then carrying through the event and doing a lot of live streaming at the event. So hopefully more news on that this month or next month.
So if somebody was interested and might be listening and watching on TV, where should they go? Who should they contact?
They should go to the Facebook page for Independence Days, and they can post a comment there, and Kimber or somebody from the committee will respond to them.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, I think it's to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just have a few items tonight. I did want to mention that the Budget Committee orientation has been rescheduled for April 3rd at 6:00 PM. It's designed for new Budget Committee members and councilors to introduce them to the budget process. It is an orientation only, and it's not mandatory, and of course, there will be no review of the proposed budget, which isn't put together at that point in time. But I just wanted to let you know, and we will be sending out an email to let everybody know, and especially the new Budget Committee member as well. Also, I wanted to let you know and the public know that next Monday, April 1st, there is going to be a joint Historic Preservation Committee and Planning Commission meeting. They're going to be talking about the code that the Historic Preservation Committee has been working on very hard for a long time, and so we're really happy to finally get that meeting put together and to get that to the Planning Commission and take the next steps to move that forward. I wanted to mention that I did get a request from the Chamber of Commerce regarding visitor center services, and this has been something that I believe was talked about before I came on and kind of took a little bit of a break. But they were able to put together a formal proposal after some conversations that we had. It really breaks down into right around $5,000 of total services. $2,400 of that goes to the rent to Indy Commons, which we've been doing for a while to make sure that they have a presence in Independence for their visitor program. There are also some monetary contributions in the amount of $2,100, which they've requested for the tourism and visitor activities that they do for both Monmouth and Independence. And then also, it allows us to have a sponsorship for the Discover Monmouth and Independence Town Premier Series. So anyway, I have looked this over, talked a lot with Vicki about this, and I believe that it makes very good sense. We definitely want to be promoting tourism and visitors. There are certainly some things that, as technology is changing and as programs evolve, that we'll be having conversations on moving forward to even make that better. But I just want to let you know that I plan on putting this in our proposed budget for next fiscal year, so if you have any questions about that, please let me know or feedback relative to that particular item, so. Fred, do you want to come up? I want to actually introduce Fred Abander. He is our new senior planner, our newest employee, actually, and he's been here for over three weeks, actually, I believe.
Yep.
So Fred was a part of an application process, and I've kind of talked to you about Fred before, but I wanted to just formally and publicly say hello to Fred and let you ask him any questions if you want, but we're very excited to have him. It's great to have a planning staff that is here most of the time, and he is going to move us, I think, to another level in customer service as well as being able to manage our projects that we're doing, so.
Fred, do you have any comments or do you have any questions for him?
Well, first of all, let me make it easy. Fred, we're on behalf of the council and myself and the city, welcome. We visited informally, but I want to, at an official meeting, officially welcome you. We're excited that you're here, and as I understand, I think your family's here, too, isn't it?
That's right, yep. So I believe in living where you plan, right? Living in the communities that you plan in. And so we moved to Independence. We're here. We're getting involved in the community. Been going to the library a lot, stuff like that. So I mean, we're definitely around. Been riding the bike trail. We're actually in the apartments at the end of town, so I've been riding the bike trail to work every day. It's actually, the first time I've driven to work was tonight, so that was just because my bike was here from earlier today, so. I like bikes. I like pedestrianism. I like all that stuff. I like economic development, vitality, community vitality, all that sort of stuff, stuff that you folks are doing, so it's nice to definitely be here, still kind of getting used to the community, but it's nice to be here.
Great. Any questions?
And I apologize for not recognizing you tonight, Fred.
That's just fine.
I'll try not to let that happen again because you mentioned my key word, which is you want to get involved.
[laughing] So, welcome. We're glad you're here. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And then, just one last thing, and this is kind of a really special thing. And so Gloria, I'm going to actually ask you to come up because I want to give you something here in a minute, but very recently Gloria was recognized by the Oregon Government Finance Officers Association with a professional finance officer's certification. And I can't go into all the details. I did look through all the criteria that it takes to get this particular certification, and it was very clear to me that whoever put that together was clearly an accountant. So one of the things that was in there is points for lunch speakers will be determined by the length of the lunch period. A one-hour lunch with a speaker will earn one-half point, while a one-and-a-half-hour lunch with a speaker will earn one point in whatever category is designated for the speaker's topic. And the list goes on and on and on with how you can accumulate points. And you actually have to accumulate 145 points in different categories, and there's a maximum and a minimum, and I'm sure there's a spreadsheet somewhere that Gloria has, tracking all of this over a four-year period. And so the point is, is this certification is not something that's given, it's earned. And Gloria has done a lot of work to earn it, and she has my respect for that, and I think ODFO has respect for that, and so Gloria, here is a plaque for you to commemorate that, and you're welcome to say anything you want. I know it was hard, and congrats, so.
Here, come step up with the seal in the back. All right, I'm going to join in for a moment here, and this is a big award, and you know that we, as a city, have won some awards from this organization before, but this is a professional pinnacle for outstanding work as a finance director, and we are very honored and glad that you're working for us, helping us move forward. This is a really big deal, and I just want to -- I know that you're very modest, but I'm also aware of how big a deal this is. So again, congratulations. Thank you, and please continue to do the good stuff so that we can keep all moving everybody forward. Congratulations, and thank you, Tom, for making that a work.
Thank you very much.
But finish my city manager report. I'm available, of course, for questions or if you have for me or for --
Questions for the manager this evening?
Just a comment. Tom and I were at the same meeting today. We went to one of the chat groups or the chat sessions that the superintendent of schools put on, and even though the attendance was small, the ideas were mighty.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's continue moving forward, and I think Mr. Irvine gets to do the next one. The provider of all the paper in our packet or the electronic pages for --
Yep. Mayor, council, I appreciate you having me here for consideration of this. So this is really trying to wrap up and put a bow on the Sunset Meadows Master Planning Process that we started a few months ago. We kind of, as you recall, we, I believe, came to you to award the bid, actually, I take that back, we came to you to talk about the process, and now I'm here to kind of tell you what happened with it, although many of you participated in one shape or another here. I'm just going to kind of, there we go. So we're talking about Sunset Meadows Park. This is the park in the new Sunset Meadows subdivision between 8th and 9th. It's kind of a linear park, and you can see this is really just pretty much a grassy field right now with a picnic table on it. But the neighbors are really excited about getting stuff done out there, and we like to work with involved citizens. So this is, you know, a little bit better, you know, kind of for anybody who's not super familiar with the, kind of where this is. You can see it's kind of the southwest part of town there, and it really is kind of this linear rectangular shape. So following our usual tradition of getting everybody involved, we had a big open house at Mountain Fur Park, Inspiration Garden in the classroom there. It was very, very well attended. I mean, I think we had over 40 people that showed up, including a lot of kids, had a lot of great feedback. Really, this was kind of the throw the mud at the wall process. So we're going to go fairly quick through here. We had a lot of just kind of broad ideas, as the usual dot exercise, what people liked and what they didn't like. A lot of interest in art. You can see a lot of interest in the nature play. These are sort of the logs and that kind of stuff. Less interest in play structures, which kind of through conversation, we found out is more about, you know, not wanting tall things where kids are up top looking down over the backyard fences of the houses that are nearby. You know, that was kind of one of the constraints, is there is, you know, a lot of houses backing up to the park, so you've got to be kind of cognizant of that. You know, a lot of just kind of broader conversations about what people want to see there, a lot of interest in trees and additional landscaping. There are some kind of water issues out there as far as runoff and controlling that that we need to deal with as well. Can we flip to the next one? There we go. So once we kind of threw the mud at the wall, we really consolidated it into two plans that were kind of by intention fairly different, and the idea was to sort of be able to compare and contrast and kind of talk about, well, I like this part of this one and that part of that one, I don't like this part of this one, and I don't like that part of that one, from which we can kind of create the ultimate plan. So this was the first concept. Everybody wanted a path, you know, going through here for walking purposes to connect up to Mountain Fur Park. This is a more linear path with a more centrally located play area. We'll go to the next one. The other kind of option had a more curving path. The downside of the curving path is there's less sort of green open space for, you know, throwing frisbees, footballs, playing soccer, that kind of thing, but a more pleasant pedestrian experience. You can see it also kind of stuck the playground a little more into the corner there and featured a covered shelter area. So some conclusions, and feel free to jump in, I'm just kind of cruising right through this. We had some really pretty solid consensus on the feedback. There was interest in shade structures, kind of shade sale type of things, play areas, like I said, they wanted kind of that free-form natural flow. Drainage and landscaping were big wants, and, you know, as well as kind of being accessible for everybody and allowing dogs. A lot of dog owners there, just some imagery for the elements. Sorry, one other thing that we did talk about was lighting. There was interest in lighting along the path, whether it'd be sort of lower-level, sort of pedestrian-scale lighting, not sort of higher streetlights that illuminate kind of a broader area. So this is the final concept, and you can see it's a little bit of a mix of both. We kept the more curvy path and the location of the playground more in the corner. It's a little hard to tell on this image, but we incorporated some more kind of berms and areas just for a little smaller kind of humps that the kids can kind of roll down and, you know, run up and down and play on that in that way as well. We also included some spaces for fitness stations. That was a amenity of interest of some people, so that's included in there as well, as well as some landscaping. You can see that side there is the south side. I always get turned around on this, and it's kind of kept a little more natural, a little more open to connect up to the southern part there, along with a rain garden. Again, it's kind of hard to tell, but that sort of bottom right-hand section that curves up around the house there, that's actually a kind of a swale with a gravelly bottom to allow for better drainage through that area. That's kind of the summary of the plan. I believe you've got a resolution for adoption. The plan for kind of proceeding on this is to really kind of do it our usual way. We're going to try to put some money in the budget for this next fiscal year to do something out there, and of course, we're going to try to match that with grants and all of our usual, you know, kind of volunteer collaboration, fundraising as well. And so it'll, you know, it's not going to happen all at once, but I do expect to see some progress here, just kind of bit by bit, the way it usually goes. Questions?
Questions for the presenter?
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
So looking through the comments, there was a lot of discussion about flooding, water management. Is the flooding only occurring in that area where we're going to have the Dry Creek, or is there additional flooding on the other end, and what's the plan to control that?
Yeah, so that's a good question, and it's a bit soupy out there generally. The only truly sort of bad, you know, flooding part is in that area where we were proposing to put the Dry Creek system, and that was to kind of deal with essentially the way the land lies when it rains really hard. You know, it's, we've got a lot of clay here, so it doesn't percolate very quickly, and it starts running off, and the way the land lies, it all runs off essentially onto that person's property.
Right.
And so that was kind of where that element came from.
Okay. And then, will there also be pets, waste receptacles?
Yes, there should be at least one out there already. I think there's one on each side.
Okay.
Additional questions? I have one. So this is a linear park that connects up so you can pass through and go on to Mountain Fur Park. Going further south from this with the new development that's going in down there, is there thoughts about the next going further south?
Yes, there is actually a pass. So when you reach the southern portion of this park, there is a pass-through between the houses across the street. Unfortunately, there is no sort of park continuation there. You would continue on a sidewalk. There is, I believe, a proposed kind of wetland natural area farther to the south in this Liberty Homes development that's going in right now. But yeah, unfortunately, the way our planning process went when that subdivision was being reviewed, they ended up changing the original plan, and we didn't, we had not at the time updated our parks plan to be able to kind of enforce the retention of that linear park in that portion of the property.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, just because I'm old. Early on, the idea of having restrooms was kind of cut out. Is there a reason for that?
Generally, it's primarily maintenance. I mean, first off, they cost a lot to put in, and then maintenance is difficult.
But there was talk about, you know, possibly porta-potties. Was there an area kind of designated for that, or?
Yeah, we kind of looked at kind of the area, can you pull up the, I can't remember where we identified it, I think, because, I think it was up on the, yeah, I was going to say, I think it's on the left-hand side, kind of by the, you know, more closer to the street, just for ease of access.
Okay.
I should also add that we did include our Public Works Department in this whole design process because it can be very easy to get excited and design all these wonderful things, and then the people that actually have to maintain it kind of say, wait a minute, what the heck are you thinking?
The other question I had was, you talked about phases. How big does the first phase have to be, and like, how many phases are you envisioning?
So that's what we're going to have to sit down and figure out. I mean, obviously, the first phase is going to be some grading and, you know, probably creating this, you know, the drainage area. You know, in my mind, the ideal first phase is grading, you know, sort of the base sort of seeding of the grass and the concrete path going through, and then the next phase would be kind of the playground development. And like, obviously, once you get the grading done, you can be planting trees and landscaping kind of whenever in there. But that would kind of, that first big chunk would be the grading and the pedestrian path.
Okay. Thank you.
I have an additional follow-up.
Please do.
What is the plan for art in the park?
Art in the park?
Like, where would we get it? Is there any kind of community involvement? Have we thought about partnering with Central to see if our community can do this?
So that is a perfect example of the kind of thing we'd love to partner with the community on. Yeah, there, we don't, I don't believe that we really kind of designated, you know, this is the spot for a statue or anything like that. It really was intended to be more of a, you know, if people get excited about putting art in parks, let's work with them and figure out the best way to do that.
So maybe we could work with Central to get, are you excited?
I think that would be a great idea.
Great. Thank you.
One quick question. There's been a lot of talk about ADA compliance in our parks, and unfortunately, the mod thing didn't work out too well for us. I know that there was a lot of enthusiasm over sort of natural play areas, and so that would basically meet that need?
So yes, and this will be, you know, kind of the, as we go towards actual, you know, funding and construction, these are the things we have to weigh. Technically, the woodchip safety surfacing is an ADA-accessible surface because it compacts down well enough that you actually can run a wheelchair on it. It's obviously not the best solution. You know, there's poured rubber surfacing and rubber tile surfacing that's better. Unfortunately, you know, if you look at the cost estimates, a poured rubber surface costs about $30,000 or $40,000 more than the woodchip safety surfacing. So those are the kind of things, you know, bottom line, baseline, yes, everything we do will technically officially be ADA-accessible.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Do we need to, is, I don't see an action item here, so is this just, we think that that's a good idea? Is that a resolution? Is it just, or is it just a consensus here, or what do you need?
I'm thinking I might have gotten ahead of myself, and this might have been just the presentation, and the next meeting, we're going to bring a resolution. Yeah.
Is that what the plan is? Okay. Great. Okay, but I think everybody's kind of going, shaking their heads, this is the right direction.
Yep. Great. As I say this, yes, we want to present it to you for comments, if we need to make any tweaks or changes, and then we'll bring the, you know, kind of the official --
Official paperwork.
-- option for the next one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chief Mason, I think you have a report here on Cleanup Day and --
Mayor, council. More of an update, I'll call it, instead of a report.
Thank you.
More than anything, we just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of changes that we're planning to make to Cleanup Day this year, and to let you know that Cleanup Day is absolutely a go. There was some talk about whether or not we were going to continue it when we moved out of River View Park, because really, we didn't think it was an appropriate place to cite the event any longer. So we have really come together with our sister city, Monmouth. The police departments in both towns and public works departments in both towns have had several meetings now, gotten together and talked about what we want to see in the event this year and how we might make it successful. So we are moving it to De'An Drive, which is the road that goes to the new boat ramp. The plan is, Public Works is going to close that road the day of the event, for the event, and it will only be event traffic for Cleanup Day that's allowed down there. That's going to give us a lot better opportunity to put a lot of cars in a line and not have a negative impact on our town, which has kind of been a problem in the past. Brance has also stepped up and is offering more assistance to the event this year, which is going to help a lot as well. Time is staying the same, except that we're going to officially say we're ending it a half an hour earlier than the event ends, because we generally have a line that we have to get unloaded, and there is a deadline to when Brance can get their trucks out to the Coffin View site and dump them, and in order to make that deadline, we have to have a cutoff that's reasonable. So the event is going to be May 18th. This is for, I know you guys all got this in your pockets, but I'm doing this so that everyone else is aware. May 18th, it's going to start at 9:00 AM. We're going to shut off cars getting into the line at 1:30, and then our plan is that we'll have everyone unloaded by 2:00. It's going to be on De'An Drive, which will have a lot of signage directing people north of town so that we don't have people wandering our streets trying to find the event this year. And as far as what we're taking and how it's working, it's very similar to the past with a couple of exceptions that I'll point out. One is, we have some vouchers this year, so that if you have a large project and you know ahead of time that you're -- know ahead of time that you're going to have a dump trailer, say, full of some reasonable project for this event, we could get you a voucher and allow you to go out to the Coffin View site yourself and bypass the event day. On that, I will say the event is meant for community cleanup, it's not meant for any kind of commercial or business or anything like that. So if you were re-roofing your house, our vouchers aren't to take your debris out to Coffin View. Or if you have a landscape company, it's not to take all your trimmings out there, those sorts of things. We're going to put our Public Works Directors, well, not Directors, Superintendents perhaps, not sure of their titles, but Ken Perkins and Mark Landau are going to be working the entry of the event to kind of determine what is and isn't reasonable this year. The other slight change besides the, the idea that we can get you a voucher ahead of time is that we want to try to find out, do a little better job of finding out who might need assistance that day because they are unable to get down there themselves. And so there are phone numbers to call from Monmouth and Independence separately, depending on which town you live in, to arrange for assistance the day of the cleanup event so that your items may make it away from your home even though you don't have the means or the physical capabilities to do it. So those will be in the paper, all that's getting sent to the paper as well, but if you call the police department here in Independence or if you call the Public Works Department in Monmouth, that's where those arrangements are made depending on where you live.
Great. Questions?
Yes.
I as well.
I have two questions. Does appliances include toilets?
No, but we would take, we would take toilets.
Okay. And on the onsite shredding, would people who just have onsite, or just have shredding to do have to stay in the same line or really possibly be shuttled off?
It's a great question, so that is, I think, one of the improvements also this year. We have a little better staging area. We're, we're going to actually have the cars go all the way down to the boat ramp, turn and come back to get into the event, so it's going to give us the ability to bring people out of that line a little better. So one of the plans was to put the shred, it's not actually going to be a truck, it's going to be containers that'll be sealed, those containers where we could put somebody off to just do that and allow them to get out of that line. We're hoping for a little more efficiency with this setup as well.
Perfect.
The Grateful Shred?
I have a follow-up.
Please do.
So I'm assuming the boat launch is going to be closed that day?
Yes.
Are we going to do any outreach considering it's the weekend before Memorial Day? I know a handful of people that put their boats in the laminate to make sure they're good to go camping.
Yes.
Okay.
Kaia is all over that.
Okay.
And I know that there are some youth groups that do use the soccer fields and I'm not sure of the scheduling on that, but I'm sure you folks are already on that one. And I like, and by the way, I like the flyer, I appreciate that.
You can thank the City of Monmouth for that, they actually designed that, that was their Public Works Department, I believe.
That's great, well, you know, I don't know if we have room in the water bills, but that might be a great place to, to make sure that more people see it because I know not everybody takes the paper. Is there anything else? Thank you for sharing with us, appreciate that. Mr. Pasterman, I think you have the next item, is that correct? Jason, Mr. Kissler.
Good evening.
Good evening and congratulations on the, your son's first birthday.
Thank you, thank you very much. So in your packet is the e-communications policy that we covered in depth on the Council Retreat on the 2nd. So basically, we're just looking for an adoption of that policy unless you have any questions.
Questions for the presenter? Everybody okay?
Okay, I move to adopt the e-communications policy as presented.
Second. The motion second, thank you, I'd, thank you for doing that, thank you for helping me personally get everything lined up so that I can do everything the right way. I do appreciate that. Any other discussion?
No, I just wanted to say thanks for the walkthrough. It was really helpful.
I would just echo, anytime you guys have any questions, definitely feel free to reach out, so.
Great.
And I talked to Jason quite a bit about the new website, which was good to hear the progress on that.
Wonderful. Okay, if there's nothing else, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Announcements. We get to, you know, we don't have to have a long meeting so that, you know, because there will be other days.
I have a couple.
Please do.
Many municipalities have been banning single-use checkout bags, but on March 28th at 1:00 at the Capitol will be a public meeting to discuss House Bill 2509 which addresses a statewide ban. Also, the weekend of March 16th, 17th, we had approximately 150 to 300 Democrats in town for a State Central Committee meeting, it's a quarterly event. Lots of kudos about our facilities, we were headquartered at Central High School, but we also spent a little bit of time at Western. Folks spent a lot of money in town, particularly at Valkyrie Wine Tavern. Everybody loved the town.
Great, thank you. Additional announcements? Okay, if someone would like to end tonight's meeting?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much.
Mayor. I want to...